Good evening. I call to order the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Apache Junction. The date is Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. Time is now seven o'clock PM. I invite you to stand with me and recite the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, Rudy.
Commissioner Barker is out tonight, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Begum.
Here.
Commissioner Cantwell.
Here.
Vice Chair Hansi.
Here.
Chairman Heck.
Here.
Commissioner Cross.
Here.
Commissioner Gage.
Here.
Sixth president, we have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of this evening's agenda. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda?
Chair.
Um, I, okay, thank you. I have a motion.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you, I knew what you were going to say. Okay, thank you. All right, I hear a motion, I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Very good, thank you. Roll call, Rudy.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Begum.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantwell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hansi.
Yes.
Chairman Heck.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. All right, we have one public hearing this evening, case P-21-6-PZ. Presentation, discussion, public hearing, and consideration of the case, a proposed plan development major amendment requested by Sridhar Krishnan of AUM Investments of the one acre property located at 512 North Valley Drive, currently zoned RM-1/PD, which is high-density, multiple-family residential by plan development, to allow the addition of seven units for a total of 13 on the property. And Morgan, right?
Yes.
Morgan, see, I got it, got it right.
Yeah, he's Morgan, not me.
Yeah, where's K., you know?
Steel trap.
Oh, baby, yes, sir.
Old, rusty, illegal in 37 states.
I'm sorry. We're losing it now.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Morgan Hen, and I am a planning intern with Development Services, and I will be going over the planned development major amendment for 512 North Valley Drive. So a little recap of what we discussed on the May 25th public hearing. This is a request for a planned development major amendment of the one acre property currently zoned RM-1-PD to allow the addition of seven units for a total of 13 units on the property. Again, in the last meeting on May 25th, there were a few concerns, and here I've outlined them for you, and I will go through them quickly. So first was the concern over the location of mailboxes. We did reach out to USPS, and they confirmed that a cluster mailbox will be required at the expense of the property owner, and that they must remain on the east side of Valley Drive. The second concern was neighborhood crime, and we did talk to the police department, and they provided a crime report of recent events, and that is in your staff report. The other concern was about the meters for Arizona water on the western side of the property, and they confirmed that these meters will need to, the property owner must maintain access to them, and they must be manhole-covered or at least blocked off during construction so they are not harmed. We also had the question of adding a gate to the property, and we had the architect draft up a site plan, which you can see here, and we had our city engineer look it over, and they recommended that this is not feasible for the project just because there is an issue with stacking, car stacking. So if you can see over here, if one car can't get in and they need to back up, one, they can't turn around because there's no room, and then two, it'll just back up into the road and create congestion. So here is the updated revised site plan, and the dumpster was moved down here on the left at the request made at the last meeting away from the playground. And, yep, no gate, so traffic is all the same. Staff recommends approval of P-21-6-PZ be subject to the conditions found in the staff report. Any questions?
All right, commissioners, questions for Morgan?
I don't have any.
No?
Well, in the packet, there's a finding from the, that was signed by the mayor back in, I don't know what date, I don't have it in front of me. But, and there were certain conditions on that approval for the zoning. Have those conditions been met?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gage, yes, yes, they have.
Okay, so they've done what they were supposed to do.
Yes, they hooked up the sewer, they put in some modest landscaping, and there wasn't a whole lot else. The sewer was the biggie, but yes, they basically implied with those conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is a, this is a public hearing, so if there's no more questions, I'm sorry.
Actually, the applicant may want to say something if they don't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to do that as part of that, okay. Okay, no more questions for Morgan then. I know, I think we'd like to have the opportunity to have the applicant speak with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I think Morgan covered the part that I was going to explain, so I don't have anything more to add to whatever she provided. It's just that if needed, I could clarify the effort that we made to add a gate, but I guess she explained it pretty well.
Any questions? I guess I, I have one. The, and I've been looking for, and I cannot locate at the moment, the report from the HA Police Department, some of those recent incidents, while I understand they may not have been resolved, or there may not have been, you know, any arrests made, but I'm trying to figure out when, if they would have occurred during the time when you owned the property.
Yeah, they are, they are pretty recent. I don't have additional details because the report that I got was just at a summary level, so I requested the PD to give me a little more detail, so I can just take a look at it and understand better what it is.
Okay. Because one of the issues for me is the neighbors raise a substantial concern about some of the complaints that they've, that have, and it seemingly a lot, a lot refer or relevant back to, back to your, back to your property. And again, I am concerned about whether we add, if we add seven more units, are we going to create the potential for twice as many, you know, twice as many opportunities for, for crime or for, for issues with the neighborhood? So how can you, what can you say to me and to the commission that would, and to the neighbors frankly, that would put them at rest, that they can be comfortable, that this is not a?
So, yeah, as I explained last time, I have a property management company that is going to manage the property, and we do have a crime-free program that, as part of our lease, that if somebody is, somebody can be, I mean, we review crime, and then based on that, people could be sent out based on the activity over there. And I also went through the police department's crime-free neighborhood, I guess, last time, I think he brought it up.
That's correct.
So I have identified the contact who can give me more information on that. I'm going to talk to them to understand what it is. I just went through the website, and it gave, at a high level, what the program is. I'm going to talk to them and understand a little bit more. If that's going to be helpful, and if that's going to ease the concerns of the neighbors, then I'll go ahead and sign up for that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Can I ask counsel, can we make that a condition of this, to sign up for that program?
Yeah, you could have it as a condition, that they participate in the crime-free multi-housing program. It's a very simple program, and it takes, it screens the tenants, and it puts something in the lease that says if they violate any of the laws, they could be evicted. And there's an eviction process too, that I'm sure the applicant knows about, but it's a crime-free housing program that, it screens tenants, and it sets it up so that the buildings are less likely to be broken into. There's something called SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, and that's where you have certain landscaping so that you could see the door from the streets, and they're basic police tactics that have been probably in place about at least 30 years. I think I told you I stole the program from Mesa. When I was living in Riverside, I was assistant city attorney there, and I actually came to Mesa, and they had the program in place for at least 10 years at that point, and they implemented it in Riverside, and it did wonders for that town. But this is a great program, and I don't think it's, there might be some expense, but I don't think it's a lot. And there's the, the.
Probably cheaper than the gate, right?
Oh, God, yes. That gate, I don't know what that gate was going to cost you, probably what, $10,000 at least?
A little bit more.
Yeah. But, and the managers have to go through a program, there's a training program for that. So it's a good program, and yes, you could require it if you so want to.
So can you give us the title again of that program?
It's called the Crime-Free Multi-Housing Program.
Good, okay, very good. And I am, I would assume, and it sounds like this program, they also provide the opportunity for some background checks or screening of applicants for, for, as renters?
Yes, now, some of the laws have changed on background checks because of the anti-police sentiment that is out there now, and some of the courts don't like it when you go too far, but there is a process. If you rent a place, you should have the right to request certain things, including a credit report. Certain things you can't ask anymore, like how many felonies have you committed in the past three days? You can't do that, but there are certain things you can still do. And management companies, I'm sure if the applicant talks to a management company, they'll tell them what the standard background check is.
Okay, good. And this, you indicated that you will have a management company that will be overseeing this property?
Yes.
Okay. Would you be willing to make that contact information available to the neighbors?
Yes.
If there's anything that they're seeing that they have the opportunity to call, call the management company?
Yeah, we do, currently, we do that.
Okay, oh, I don't remember.
Currently, we do all those, the background checks and credit checks and stuff.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, any other questions?
I have one comment.
Yeah, sure.
This is a little bit of an unusual thing here with, you know, basically apartments in the middle of single-family housing. So if this was starting from scratch, I probably would have a problem with it. Given that this has already been approved, then I'm a little bit more comfortable with it. But, you know, with that in mind, it becomes more important for you to work with the neighbors to make sure that everything is compatible. So I don't think there should be too much of a problem if you're doing the things that you're saying that you're going to do. Just, you know, be a nice neighbor.
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, well, this is, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone out in the audience that wishes to give, any, give a statement, please let us know, come forward. Seeing none, then I will, will close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sridhar. Okay, any, any comments, anything before we, this is an opportunity to determine if the issues we had from the prior Planning and Zoning Commission meeting were resolved to, to our comfort level? So any, any thoughts?
I'd like to have seen a couple of years of this police activity resulting from, which I'm assuming is this address, meaning that these incidences are committed by individuals at that address, but I also would like to have seen incidences attributed to residents of this address in the neighborhood. And sometimes these criminal types don't play around in their own backyard, they go next door to play. But, and what they have listed here, I see one, two, three, four, five crimes. And the fifth one, a dog or a cat bite, I'm just kind of like, maybe. But I don't see that this would be a detriment to the community. I just don't, I don't see that as sufficient number of criminal activity in the neighborhood over the course of almost a year. You have six incidences, you know? I'm, I'm, I'm not seeing that as a significant amount of criminal activity. Now, if they were to, if they were to have brought crimes attributed to, in the neighborhood, to this address or residents of this address, then I might be more inclined to have said, okay, maybe there is a problem with the residents at this, at this address, but I don't see that here. So I can't go by anything other than what I see right here, and I don't see that as a problem.
Okay.
Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bergman. Yep, Commissioner Cross.
The way I look at this project is, for what he's going to be doing, it's going to make it a nicer neighborhood. He's going to be building it out to where that back lot isn't going to be collecting riffraff. By having it, you know, having the newer buildings, giving the older ones a facelift and stuff, I think it's going to discourage crime versus attracting it. And the fact that he's already stated that he's moving or doing away with some of the lower-income type residents, I definitely think that this is on the right path to a better neighborhood.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Commissioner Cross.
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, since we're not going to do the gate because it isn't feasible, I think we should definitely add the crime-free multi-housing as part of a condition of it. And I think it benefits the community as a whole. From my understanding of it, if there are crimes committed, whether it's on property or not, if it traces back to those residents, it will affect their status there, right, Joel? That's kind of how that program works. I did try to find some on it and read.
Well, I don't know the status, I mean.
Well, if they get too many complaints, then it'll affect their ability to live there, right? If they get in trouble, basically, with the law.
Well, it's in their lease agreement that they not commit any crimes.
Right. Whether it's on property or off.
Correct.
Right. So that could affect, and I think that'll help.
And laws, laws, some laws have changed, like marijuana, for example.
Right.
That used to be one of the key things, you could not, you could say you can't have marijuana on premises.
Right, but it's no longer illegal.
Now it's legal.
Right.
So you can't.
So it's no longer a crime.
Right. But there's other things, standard things that, you know, you, you can't have domestic violence, you can't bring in people that are going to break windows, that kind of stuff.
Right.
And the police department runs the program. They have, they're hooked into it pretty well. They do it in other, other communities also, mobile home parks, for example.
So I think that would help with the community around there and everything as well, so I think it's a win-win. I think it'll actually probably do more for even the developer here, because I think it'll do more for them than a gate would. I mean, I think it'll actually give them more power and everything to help clean up the area.
I concur with that.
So I actually think this is better, so that's my thoughts on this. As long as we include that, I think it's, it's a win.
Okay, very good, thank you. Vice Chair Hansi, any other comments or? Nope, okay. I guess my only comments or any insight I have is, I, I would agree with the other commissioners. I think their, this has the potential to, to really improve that, that property. I, I would highly encourage the applicant to have the management company reach out to these neighbors. Unfortunately, you have a lot of neighbors who are very skeptical. They think the more, the more people you add in that, in your, in your complex, the more potential for crime and, you know, bad, bad occurrences. I think if he could reach out to them and make certain that he or, gee, I'm sorry, could reach out and make certain that there is a, that there's a connection, that they feel that there is someone they could go to to help resolve that, I think that would probably go, go a long way. But I do agree, that crime-free multi-housing program, I think is, I think, again, that's, that makes a statement to the neighbors that you heard them, we've heard them, and that we, that is an issue that, that concerns them and us, and I believe everything you do to help resolve that or put that, put a level of comfort, or give them a level of comfort, will be, well, the time will be well-spent with that. Okay. With that being said, then I guess I will, I will hear a motion on the, on case P-21-6-PZ.
That's right.
I'll do it. I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the Apache Junction City Council the approval of case P-21-6-PZ, a planned development major amendment request by, forgive me, Siddhar Krishnan of AUM Investment LLC to amend the planned development of one acre in order to allow for the addition of seven apartment units for a total of 13 apartment units, subject to the following conditions and approval, and I won't read all of them other than to also add the crime-free program.
Chair, before you give a second to that, I think in the staff report, you're actually adding another condition with regard to what the city engineer said? Is that? So there's actually, there'll be seven conditions? So this, it says addition of condition number six. Street improvements include but are not limited to extension of pavement, sidewalk, curb, gutter, streetlights, underground utilities, fire hydrants, landscaping, subject to review and approval by the city engineer. So that would be the sixth, and there would be a seventh related to the crime-free multi-housing.
Do we also need to add the keeping of the easement?
For the water meters?
For the water?
I think that's already a given.
Okay.
Yeah.
Should, do we need to add that, the commitment by the applicant to provide contact information from the, from the?
Yes, if you want to add that to the seventh about the crime-free multi-housing and that the, the property owner, contact the neighbors to make sure the neighbors know about the property management company and who to contact at any hour, day or night.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Do we need to, do we need to?
I think you need to spell that out because our, according to my understanding of the state statute, your motions have to be verbatim in the, in the minutes.
Let's make it easy. Withdraw your motion.
Withdrawn.
And now.
Restate.
Restate.
Right, okay. So do we need to vote on a withdrawing, or it's never been?
Well, it wasn't.
Well, it was never seconded.
So you're good. But withdrawing is good.
Okay.
So I'll put this motion back up, so you have it.
So do I, do I hear a motion on case P-21-6-PZ?
Okay, let's try this again, and forgive me when I butcher your name again. I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the Apache Junction City Council the approval of case P-21-6-PZ, a planned development major amendment request by Siddhar Krishnan of AUM Investments LLC to amend the planned development of one acre in order to allow the, for the addition of seven apartment units for a total of 13 apartment units, subject to the following conditions. In addition to the ones listed, we will add that the applicant will participate in the crime-free, what is the name of it?
The Crime-Free Multi-Housing Program.
Crime-Free Multi-Housing Program, and will contact the surrounding neighbors with the information regarding your management company and who to contact if there are issues. Am I missing anything else there?
You've got to read this staff recommendation.
The staff recommends, okay, we also recommend approval. And number six, that street improvements include but are not limited to extension of pavement, sidewalk, curb, gutter, streetlights, underground utilities, fire hydrants, landscaping, subject to review and approval by the city engineer. Am I missing anything else?
Very good, okay, I have a motion. Do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, I have a second. I'll call for a vote, Rudy.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Begum.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantwell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hansi.
Yes.
Chairman Heck.
Yes.
Motion passes, Mr. Chairman. This goes to the city council next Tuesday.
Very good. Thank you. All right, moving on, old business, any old business? I think we have any, all right. New business? No, I don't think we have any of that either, okay. Information reports, the chairman has no information or reports for the commission this evening? The director's report?
Just a couple of quick items. I think we told you at the last meeting, we're working on some amendments to the downtown, the B3 district, hoping to maybe have a draft of those by your next meeting, which I think is the 22nd, I believe. And then I, not quite going back to the drawing board on the, our favorite topic of accessory structure, so I did get quite the feedback from all the, all the staff, as well as your input, so I just didn't get a chance to put that together for tonight, so just letting you off the hook tonight on that. My presentation next time will only be three hours instead of one hour.
Gosh, we were really hoping it would be tonight, too.
Yeah, okay, that's it.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, selection of meeting dates, times, locations?
Pardon me? Oh, there is a workshop, a community workshop for this development that you heard last night for the superstition vistas, so they are having a community open house on Monday, the 14th, at, I believe it's, do you know what time it is, Rudy? Is it five o'clock? We can find out, I mean, I'm, if you let other people know, I mean, you've seen the presentation, so we aren't encouraging you to go because you might have quorum issues or whatever, but it's really an open house for the community, just so if you're talking to folks and let them know.
Where's the open house?
It's at the Multi-Gen Center, and I think it's from five to seven or five to eight, something like that.
When is it?
Monday.
This Monday?
This coming Monday, yeah.
The 14th?
We can email out some information tomorrow from Sydney about.
Please do.
Details. I think there should have been an ad in the paper or some other way, and they've notified hundreds and hundreds of people, mostly who live in Mesa, but about that, that workshop or open house, public information meeting, whatever you want to call it.
Is this on the city website?
I don't believe it's on the city website. It's just typical, like any rezoning, we have, you have to post the site, so the site, from a zoning standpoint, has not been posted, the annexation was posted, but not the rezoning, so they don't. As you get closer to the public hearing, you have to post a sign regarding the rezoning and an affidavit of posting and all that, so this is just a public open house for folks that, it's like a neighborhood meeting. So what we require as part of any rezoning, these folks had to have a neighborhood meeting. They have to have a neighborhood meeting, and they may have more than one. So it's at the Multi-Gen Center, I think it's B117, it's those smaller classrooms on the west side of the building.
Very good, okay, thank you. All right, back to selection of meeting dates, times, locations.
Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner, Vice Chair.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission hold a regular meeting on June 22nd at 7:00 PM, located.
at seven PM located in the city council chambers located at three hundred East Superstition Boulevard. In event there are no items to be brought forward to the commission, these meetings may be canceled, notification of cancellation properly posted, and the commission may note, may notify by staff.
Very good, thank you, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Very good, I have a second, roll call, Rudy.
Chairman Heck.
Yes.
Commissioner Cross.
Yes.
Commissioner Gage.
Yes.
Commissioner Begum.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantwell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hanchi.
Yes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Very good, thank you, if hearing nothing else, I call, adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-one. Thank you.